By my son. Yes, my husband and son were twice infected with COVID. So instead of them going over there, I decided now it was time to come back and stay with them. And I was offered this position in Pasco County. And right now I do several like aspects of the planning process. I'm working also a member of the Historic Preservation Group within the county. Sadly, this county had disbanded the Historic Preservation Advisory Committee. So we are trying to get that back. And I was also, I'm still a member of the Tidingsville Foundation. And these friends and Historic Preservation, they do a lot on the east coast. So I love that because my degree is in architecture as well. So and here I'm doing comprehensive planning. I'm doing also analyzing and researching on affordable housing, participating in Historic Preservation. Several aspects of the planning activity which I enjoy. And I have always been interested in New England. And because I also have ties to England from my country history. So I feel that interest. And I would like to have sometime that experience to be. I feel that in New England, the history is being preserved and respected. And that's something that I agree with. And that's so important for now and for the future. So yeah, that's kind of like my, my background.
Okay, thank you. So what we kind of do is we just go around the table and we start asking questions. And since we're not at a table actually, so why don't we start with? I think Jackie let us off the last time, or maybe you were last last time, you might want to go first.
Let me unmute myself. I was last last time, just for state state of fact, but that's okay. I'm happy to go. I was pleased to hear your comment Jenny about the the history of New England is well preserved and respected. I would, I would like to agree with you. I think in many cases it is, but it's a, it's many ways. It's also an uphill battle here. The primary role of the Winchester Historical Commission is the preservation of the town's historical resources. And like, as you correctly sense, like most New England towns, Winchester embodies a lot of its heritage and its history in its homes and the downtown buildings. So I really only have like a two-part question for you. What do you think is the primary role of the town planner with regard to historical preservation? And then secondarily, what do you think the role of historical preservation is in the larger context of town planning, particularly with respect to housing?
Okay, well, that's interesting question. First of all, for me, Historic Preservation and preserving the buildings the most you can is part of, to be very honest, and that's what I always say, it's economic development. Because people would like to go to see what there is this unique things that they do not have in other places. So that first of all is economic development. It's not all, of course, what I said is what I think and believe. You should keep for the future and for the time and generations, you should keep this, all of these precious environments that have been wisely designed. Of course, there are cases that some buildings are not the cost of renovating and pulling up with energy problems, situations and all of that. That's a high cost. And that's what when I was working in north, northern Germany, that's made me super sad because of climate conditions, some buildings cannot be kept, well kept. And they have to just tear it down, which is, yeah, I know that's easier and cheaper. But while you have to do the assessment, which is important, the assessment is very important to see what is doable. And but having that priority in mind that adaptively use so many things instead of just tearing down. Yeah. So that, that's my opinion. And I always say you, you are wasting your losing your, an economic development aspect of all of this, if you just destroy everything because it's not it's expensive to renovate or reuse.
Thank you.
Jack, do you want to have a follow-up on that or?
No, I think she covered it well. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, you think?
Um, Jenny, I really appreciate your international experiences in Europe. I think Europe is a different planning probably philosophy. And also even in it's, I looked it up. It seems like you're in a pretty, pretty urban environment, right? A town of about 90,000 or so, just significantly bigger than ours. Um, and I, I'm curious about your, how you view the planner position in being a, so, so housing is, is one of our biggest challenges here in this region. A huge shortage, it's highly expensive. And so as a board, we, you know, we really need to have challenges, legislative challenges from the state level on getting housing built as well as preserving our historic historic resources that are really beautiful and precious. And so how do, in, in any of these housing conversations, there is just a really a lot of voices and very different perspectives. And how do you see your role as a planner in that, in facilitating that conversation? And can you maybe help us, you describe to us a situation where that, that you've been in that would illustrate that kind of skill set?
Okay, thank you for that question. Well, first of all, I would say I, I would say, well, we have a crisis right now here everywhere in the United States. A housing crisis that is not stopping. So I am doing a project, I am researching right now on a segment of an older area that it's kind of like it not, I wouldn't use the word lighted, but it needs renovation and improvements. And, and now at this point, before I move forward, because it's kind of there, they have some historic properties on that segment of that area. I am analyzing the parcel square footage versus what I would recommend accordingly. Because you know, we have here a high hazard coastal high hazard areas that that needs a resiliency that needs to be taken into consideration before you recommend where and how and what. So I'm going and analyzing this different aspects of this area. And I am about to propose, like I am taking segments and analyzing how big this square footage of the parcels are. And what is the, like, let's say the typology or the urban typical to see if that's convenient as a, as weird as it may sound, but probably that's doable and economically viable. Instead of only thinking, oh, we have to build townhomes, we have to build mixed use. We have to build, and probably some of them are not going to be a reality. Because you know, construction prices rise and all of these additional aspects of economic aspects that do have an influence. So what I would recommend is infill. I would recommend using the same typologies and trying to preserve what is there. But also trying to maximize the use, like in Germany you use and in Europe, you try to compact, to do compact development. You do not extend, you just define the areas where you want development and that's it. Because once the land is gone, it's gone. That's it. So we, in Europe, there are other problems. Yeah, there are other, all the problems, the prices are very high for rentals, you know. People over there do not own the properties, they rent. But if the rentals goes up so high that you cannot afford, then there is a problem. It's a big problem. In Berlin, for instance, there are buildings that are empty. Nobody lives there. Nobody rents there and people don't have where to live. And that creates a conflict. So yeah, the housing prices is everywhere. And I wouldn't like to see what is happening in some places that we come here up to that point. That would be very sad. Yeah. Yeah, but I would recommend infill. I would recommend adapting to the typical and trying to analyze the, the rise of the construction costs. Because that's a factor that we cannot deny. And then some projects can even not become a reality.
Thank you.
No, you're welcome.
Thank you, John.
Okay. I guess I'm going to continue the theme of the discussion a little bit. Jenny, in researching this position, how familiar have you become with Winchester specific housing issues in, in the Boston area and, and in particular Massachusetts zoning laws? And what do you see as the significant differences between Massachusetts and Florida?
Oh, well, what I see is that sadly, there's the housing costs have a high rocket in, up north, but it's happening here as well. So that's a sad reality because there should be a proportion between your income and the affordability of the house, the housing. Otherwise, it becomes very limited to the people that would like to go and be, we have relatives in Boston and I know that it's very, very expensive. And that, yeah, that's, that's a situation that is concerning for me. I am interested, but yeah, I have seen the prices. Though the rental prices are a certain percent higher than here, but not as much as I thought it will be. Because we have here in Florida, we have thousands of people coming every day from all of the United States. It's like 13,000 people coming each day. So that it puts a pressure on the costs as well. On top of that, the insurance companies are leaving Florida. So yeah, we, we have to deal with this situations. And regarding zoning, that's also a big challenge. Because of this pressure to develop just anywhere. If sometimes you have these tools like MPUDs that I don't agree with. I, I, to be very honest, it's like a carte blanche. I don't agree with that. And creating more sprawl does not dissolve.
John, did you have a follow-up question?
That's fine.
Okay, thank you. Sally.
Thank you, Deeb, and thank you Jenny for meeting with us this evening. Um, I want to just follow up on John's question. He had asked how familiar you are with some of the laws that are driving housing solutions in Massachusetts? And if you're familiar with them enough that you can talk about the differences between the Florida housing laws and solutions in the Massachusetts environment?
Well, regarding Massachusetts, I have like only superficially reviewed that about the zoning. I will have to do a, a deeper research on that. What Deeb told me was that from the state level, the town is receiving some guidelines that need to be applied. And that has to be, I, my humble opinion, that has to be analyzed and see how this can happen and how that more convenient for the future of the town. Because those decisions that you take, if not right, then here is consequences. And also, it's important to create a center. Create a center where it's not like private development and in zoning and uses. That's mixed use in some areas and but not gentrification and also do not put like anything everywhere because that's, that's what we have here. I do not recommend that. You, you don't need each three quarters of a mile, the same thing. That's the difference, that's the central difference with, with Europe and United States and especially Florida. That I am not saying that happens in the north. I know that the north not so well as the south, but still it, I would say it doesn't happen in over there, but I wouldn't recommend that either.
Right.
Are there additional things that I should cover on regarding zoning?
Well, so the Winchester zoning bylaw is as complex, I think, as any municipal bylaw. And it has all its own idiosyncrasies. And it takes a lot of familiarity to be able to sit in a pre-application meeting and advise a potential applicant for a special permit or a site plan review. Having been referred to the planning board or the planning department and the planning board by the building department. It takes a really deep familiarity with the zoning bylaw to be able to substantively advise them on the question of are they going in a, in a permissible direction? Or are they just going off to something that would never be permitted? So that's one of the things that the town planner would be responsible for. So really knowing the zoning bylaw. And then beyond that, it's also the town bylaws and the town charter and all of the governing documents of our small New England town. And then beyond that, it's the Massachusetts general laws primarily as they relate to housing. I think that, but I mean, the fact is that I have tagged in my two and a half years on the planning board a dozen different Massachusetts general laws, MGL, that we keep coming back to for reference because they're guiding our work. And so I'm curious how, as you've gone to different places that you've worked around the world, how have you familiarized yourself with the very specific idiosyncratic and legislative environment that you're working in?
Okay, well, that's an interesting question. Well, specifically in Germany, they, they have a book that's kind of like the Bible. So for any project, any, I was working for a private company. So I will have to do the other part, like present the project to the officials. So I will have to have all the laws, all the requirements, complete calculations, everything in order for them to either accept or deny. And also considering environmental and all of that other aspects. That was different because over, over there, the last work has the official. Not here, like for instance, in Florida, they hire here a lawyer and not, I'm not attorney. And this represents the applicants. And you go to the pre-op. And regardless if you have the backup of the comprehensive plan, because I work with the future land use, the vision. So the zoning has to comply with the future land use. Right? So if it does not comply, it should not go further.
That's right.
Right? So but here sadly, that doesn't happen always. Well, sometimes the pre-op is, goes only for zoning. Still, we are asked about what the advice is. And sometimes depending on this pre-op on the project, on this proposal, we advise also on different aspects as, for instance, wetlands or ecological corridors or bishop roads or archaeological sites of those that we have in the GIS. So depending on the pre-op on this proposal, we do go further and say, or we also have districts. These districts have a specific vision. And this has to be also regarded. Sometimes that doesn't happen either. So yeah, there are some situations that happen. Or they use, which I don't agree with, they use this tool of the MPUDs, which is a poor tool instead of saying, okay, do whatever you want.
Can you, can you go back to that? I don't know what MPUD stands for. And I'm curious why you said earlier that you don't think it's a good tool?
Okay, MPUD is like master plan unit development.
Okay.
But if you have, if you, that's, that's your, you have studied that, you have worked on that. You know that a master plan unit development should be first of all, should have mixed use and should consider all of the needed spaces like green areas, walkability, all of that. Which is not the case always. Because if you check your comprehensive plan and your future land use plan and you see that it has so many MPUDs or planning development, as they also say, well, then you do not know if that's poor design or poor planning. And, and that I wouldn't advise that. I, I wouldn't advise either you. And then of course, regarding only the zoning, yeah, it depends if it's what, what you can do in each zoning classification. That depends on the, well, in this case on the county, what is allowed and what is not allowed. And, and then you have to be very consistent on that. If you give space for vague interpretation, then you are going to have trouble. And that happens a lot.
Right.
So yeah, yeah, it's, it's hard.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Nick.
Okay, can you hear me?
Yep.
Okay, great. Okay, so, so you know, so we have a historic town with a historic look and feel. But we also have this housing crisis. And let's just say as a hypothetical that we need to build more apartment blocks to house more people. But we need to do it in the center of town. And it's by right. How do we buy zoning or by other means sort of protect the historic look and feel of the town at the same time that we're addressing the issue of having more housing, you know, being built in that context?
Really? Well, now I'm going to refer to my experience in.
I mean, and just to add, you know, there may be, you know, form-based zoning might be an approach, but maybe there are some other approaches.
There are some others, yeah. Well, you know, the transect, which is used from base code, of course. And why not to say this additional, this kind of like mother-in-law suite and so that is also, that's well-used in Europe. And this is well-used also, as I have seen, I have been doing research on that in the northern United States is being used a lot. Like.
But what, I'm sorry, what is that that's being used?
This additional unit that you build on top of, like you raise one floor.
Okay.
Or you, these units that you can add to any building. Now regarding the existing buildings and how to add more housing areas.
Well, let me just interrupt for a minute. I was, I was thinking more about teardowns and sort of you know, a completely new development that we may, from time to time, have to entertain in the center of town. And how that, and how we might have zoning that would kind of protect the historic look of the town at the same time as we address the need for a new development.
Okay, well, it depends on the, what are your regulations? If you have a historic district, what do you allow in that district? But by all means, I would try to respect the architecture, the colors, the heights, and try to increase the, the density. Because that's the only way you can comply and get like kind of level the crisis. Because that's needed. We know we all have a crisis, housing crisis is getting each day. Because that's needed. We know we all have a crisis, housing crisis is getting each day worse. And, yeah, that has to be done. I, I think to protect the, the visual of the historic district, I would use the same type of architecture, try to replicate materials and facets and try to kind of increase density and intensity. That by all means, yeah. Also trying to include the walkability and all of these aspects of a good town planning. Yeah, that's important. Because otherwise you are only from dependent on the car, and that's, that's not, not good.
That's a good point. I'm, I'm still here, by the way, I've lost my internet, so you can no longer see me. And I can't get it back at the moment, or maybe coming back here. But I'm here and I'm, I appreciate your, your response.
We've, we've lost Jack as well, so I hope he's still his power. Any follow-ups on that, Nick?
Um.
We can come back if there's time, if you want.
Yeah, I, yeah, I, you know, I, I don't think so at the moment. I'm sort of, some parallels to Europe, but I, I don't think I have any, any follow-up at this, at this point.
Excellent. Okay, Carrie, please.
Yeah, thank you so much. Your answers have been great. And I would love just even a brief comment on opportunities that you think the town could take advantage of in balancing our built environment with our natural environment or getting ready for all of the climate change that we're so abundantly seeing this summer. Any thoughts on that interface?
Oh, yes, by all means, I would use, I would like minimize pavement in pervious areas. I would utilize pervious materials in order for stormwater to drain. I would increment the trees on specific areas, especially where the shade is needed, including commercial buildings that has to be taken into consideration as well. Try to do pocket parks or urban gardens. That's also options for green and providing these areas for drainage, which are so important. And also reading the space and like not producing urban heat.
Right. Okay, great. Thank you so much.
So I have a couple of connected questions. And so we have a planning department of one person currently, which would be the town planner. We are hoping to add an assistant planner next fiscal year, but that has to go through town meeting. So I'm trying to understand where you feel most comfortable in terms of, do yourself, do you see yourself more as, as an analyst who guides policy? Are you someone, I mean, one of the things that our planner does is they work extensively with residents. They work with the engineering department, they work with the building department. So there's a lot of, you know, sort of, I call it, you know, street level work versus, you know, the 30,000 feet overview. And so you come, right now, you're, it seems like you're working more on a regional level. So where are you most comfortable? And do you have any experience working at that lower level in direct contact with developers and residents and all of those people? Where do you see yourself?
Well, in that sense, it's kind of difficult. I, I do like to interact a lot. I have done, like, I have done this town development projects in Germany where I had to evaluate all of the input of the public and all of that. I also enjoy it a lot, doing research and analyzing and event reading. I like that a lot, research a lot. And I do like to give alternatives, solutions to see what's the best option for each case, which is sometimes a combination. I, I do like that a lot. I am not a confrontational person. By the way, it's my nature, I do express my thoughts directly. So probably that's not liked by some. But other than that, yeah, I, I do like to interact. I cannot say, well, I do not like a lot the phone. That's not kind of like my, my preference. I enjoy more the computer or just reaching out to people by, by mail or because I think that's efficient, that's the best way. People, if you're not sure what I have asked, then it's written down. Instead of talking, that sometimes people forget what they have been asked. That sort of thing, but I am very flexible. Yeah. But I am not kind of authoritarian person. That's not, I'm not confrontational. And sometimes I do see that probably that's needed sometimes, but, well.
Yes, it is. So I have a quick follow-up and then my second question. So if, if I were to tell you that you would, that the split between sort of this analysis and research and the other duties might be as little as 10 to 15 or maybe 20% of your time, is that, is that a a ratio that you would feel fulfilled with? Because, you know, again, one of the things about being a small planning department is that you wear a lot of hats and you always get to do the fun stuff, which I understand, the analysis, I completely agree, the analysis and the research, you know, that's where my heart lies. I'm not a planner, but that's where I would go. So you think that, you know, is, that's part, that's one of the questions. Because the other, the, it actually comes into my other question, which is, what is the relationship that you think the planner and the planning board should have? Do you think the planner is the one which guides? Is the planner the one which implements? What's that sort of, what's the structure of that relationship?
Well, the way we work here in Florida is that the planner advises. And the board takes the decision, which is not always what the planner advises. That's it. I think the public input is very important. For me, that's the voice you should hear because they are the ones that have to deal with the decisions. So, yes, the planner advises, but the public component is very important. And of course, the, the board is the one that takes the decision. Sometimes it's not very popular decision. And what we all hope is that the future, that they are guiding the future in the right way, which that's kind of like ambiguous because you never know how things are going to change because the world is dynamic. So one day, it's one thing, another day, there's a different thing, you have to adapt. The planner advises. That's, that's the, if, if you were here now in Germany, that's not the way it is. The last word has the official. There are no boards, no nothing. So it's, but how we work here, the planning board is the one that takes the decision. And that, that's how it is.
Okay, thank you. We're approaching a lot of time, and I want to ask if there are any other follow-up questions that anyone had.
No, I don't think so.
Everyone looks fairly satisfied. Are there any questions that you would like to ask us?
Yeah, I would like to know the timeframe of your, this is gonna be for next year process.
We have been without a planner since January the 9th. So we are interested in moving forward with some speed.
Okay.
We have, there was a number of ish of initiatives that are moving forward. We need to prepare for our spring town meeting of next year, which is in April, and that requires six, seven months lead time, and so we, we are looking to move quickly.
Okay. Well, thank you for.
Hey, well, thank you very much for joining us and submitting your application. We have a couple more interviews in this round, so I, I don't know exactly when we will come to a decision process, but it should be within, I'd say the next week or so, at least. And so I will keep you up to date.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Very nice talking to you.
Thank you, Jenny.
Very nice meeting you.
It's been a pleasure. Thank everyone. Oh, we need to, I need to ask for a motion to adjourn. We got to do this.
Don't move.
This is second.
Second.
Okay, all in favor, just raise your hand. All right, okay, thank you all very much. John, you better get out there before it starts raining.